The order. First item on the agenda, 2.1, curriculum, new books. Mr. Trossler, Mr. Bernard.
Yeah, so we are right now in conversation with the Department of Education on requirements regarding schools that we have listed as what they call UIR schools, urgent intervention required. Those schools are schools that we have to write plans for and submit to the State Department for approval by BESI to show our plan to support growth in particular subgroups. The subgroups that we're talking about are students with disabilities, and we have one school labeled for EL. So we have to apply, we have to build a plan. Dr. Aguilar has been in conversation back and forth with the state to get clear answers about what we are required to do regarding tier-one curriculum in those schools. As of this meeting starting, we had not yet got, received any clear answers. The state is trying to get those to us. We put this here just as an informational piece to let you all know that there's a possibility that we may have to purchase tier-one material. The state is certainly supporting schools having the highest quality curriculum in front of our students, but again, we're not certain of what we're required to do. The price tag there is not necessarily something that we have to absorb or support fully. There's grants available in the same way that we received approximately $1.2 million last year with our CIR schools in the zone. We have an opportunity to receive money to help support this, but we certainly wanted you all to know that this is on the table, and we're just waiting for clearer direction from the state.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trossler. Mrs. Centan?
Ms. Trossler, I have a couple of questions about this. So this is going to be changing the ELA curriculum in just these schools, not district-wide?
Correct.
And do we have a plan to change the curriculum district-wide in the future?
We have spoken about the possibility of moving this as a Phase 1, and then moving into a Phase 2 in the next couple of years, yes.
And the, this curriculum is not currently in use in any of these schools? Are we implementing them in the Transformation Zone schools this year?
That curriculum is being implemented in the Transformation Schools this year.
How's it going? You know, I think back to 2012 to 14 when, you know, Eureka Math and the Common Core standards were implemented, and we had a real, a real rough time, time event. I wanted to see if we had a better plan. How's it going implementing it in a smaller number of schools rather than district-wide right off the bat?
Well, for those schools, it's quite a, anytime you implement a new curriculum, it's going to be tough. So we've certainly supported through PD and those types of things, but it is, it is just tough when you're implementing something new. So it's been a struggle. We've made some strides, and I think some great progress along the way, but I think the teachers, we, we didn't have the benefit of receiving this curriculum early enough last year. It came in right at the end of the summer, once our grant was approved. So teachers started school with something brand-new. Hopefully, we would be able to have things ahead of time if we have to move to the tier-one curriculum in these urgent intervention-required schools.
The, I'm trying to think, I wanted to ask that question. So have we, have we learned outside of getting them ahead of time? And let's say, you know, do we have any timeframe on when this, this grant money may be approved, or when the state may give us guidance so that we don't find ourselves in the same position next year that we find ourselves in this year?
Correct. It's called a super app where the, the state is, we have to enter all of our grant applications in one, one app. The state refers to it as the super app. That app, all our applications are due by February 1st. The state says they will notify us by April, so that is quite a few months ahead of when we were notified in the first round.
What kind of lessons have, have you guys learned in implementation this year where maybe you found some professional development that was more worthwhile than other professional development? Have you, have you guys reviewed that yet?
Yes. Mr. Bernard, if Randy wants to come up, he, he has been looking at various vendors, and told me he has looked at some that he thinks would be really good providers for the PD for our district.
Have we delivered PD for the Transformation Zone?
Yes.
This year on this curriculum?
We have ahead of time, and it is ongoing in those schools.
Randy Bernard, Academic Specialist. So the Transformation Zone used a company called the American Reading Company for their professional development this year. There were ups and downs with that, and we are currently looking at two companies, Teaching Lab and School Kit. Both those companies partnered with the State Department to develop their content leader training, and by all accounts, it's very, very high-quality.
Okay. Did we, we surveyed the, the teachers who received the development, and they, they were, gave us feedback, quality feedback on?
I reached out to, to district staff in, in other districts where these companies were used, and got feedback from their administrators.
Well, how about, I meant the, the professional development that we've delivered thus far this year? Are we, we getting good feedback, like, feedback from the people who are receiving it to tell us whether they found it worthwhile?
So Ms. Trossler can correct me, but my understanding is at, in the beginning, there was some negative feedback, but, but that's improved greatly now.
That is correct. We act, the vendor actually, we asked for a change in some of the presenters that just weren't working out, and they granted that, and it's been much better since then.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board comments? Ms. Morris?
Ms. Trossler, the board members received an anonymous email with some concerns on this item that I shared with you. So it's my understanding that our, the number of our UIR schools increased with the recent release of scores, but some of those were added on simply, I don't want to say simply because of, but LJ Alama, for example, has the disabled population, and they got a UIR designation for that. It's a fairly small percentage of all the students. So do we know, under all of the grant requirements, if there's a subset of students, 10%, who have justified a UIR designation? Does that then mean that the tier-one curricula has to apply to the entire school, even with a small percentage?
That answer is yes. We, we did get clarification on, you can't, if, if a school is identified as UIR, even for a small group of students, that it would be tier-one across the entire school. That is part of ESA. ESA forces us, expects us to not, and I don't want to use the word ignore, but I'll just say that, to not say with only these, this small amount of students. ESA expects us to show growth in all students in schools. Now, Dr. Aguilar, and I'll let him speak to that, one of his questions to the State Department today is, what happens if we simply choose to develop a plan to, to grow, develop a plan to move those students academically without that tier-one curriculum, and, and what does that do to funding for us?
So Dawn, I've, I've asked three times now, over the last two days, the State Department of Education to answer a couple of questions. One of them is this idea about a small subset of students receiving the UIR label, requiring all students at that school, you know, to switch to tier-one. And we're talking about ELA, because our Eureka Math is tier-one. So, so I understand, you know, the difficulties there with changing a curricula, and so teachers are going to have to learn the new material. So I'm trying to find out exactly what the requirements are. For districts as large as Lafayette, we have approximately 8,200 students who are fitting into this category of the state saying we need to provide tier-one materials. 8,200 students. The cost for all of the materials and the professional development is right at $2.5 million. The state keeps telling me that Lafayette is a priority, and I believe that, that they are absolutely intent on helping Lafayette receive ESA funding, a significant amount of ESA funding. For example, the Transformation Zone this year received $1.2 million, of federal dollars, to the state, to Lafayette, and we used it to buy the tier-one materials. We could expect another large expenditure for this year, round two, but we would still likely have to flex Title I monies and IDEA monies, and maybe even some general fund dollars. So we're trying to find out, for districts like us that have schools with small subsets of students, is the district required to participate in the competitive grant for ESA funding? And if not, as a district, would we be able to take responsibility for supplementing what we currently use to support those students who are part of that subset? So we're trying to get answers to those questions. We just wanted to get this ahead of the board members as we head toward the budgeting season.
And Ms. Morris, if I may, you referenced the email that you received. There was a question on the email about the, the schools who are, who are identified for discipline. We actually had an answer the other day from someone from the State Department that said, yes, you had to move to tier-one curriculum for a school that had a label of any type. Today, we were told that that's not correct, that we are going to have to develop a plan for discipline improvement, but it doesn't require tier-one curriculum being implemented.
Okay. And recognizing that I'm not an educator, it does seem, though, that it should be a goal of the district to, to move all of our curricula to tier-one at some point, kind of phase it in. So I know that the teachers are comfortable with what we currently have, and nobody likes change, especially when they're already so busy, but it does seem that regardless of whether it's a mandate under these current things or not, that it should be a goal regardless to move towards tier-one across the entire district.
And Dawn, I think we agree with you. It's just, we'll just let you know, the price tag for full implementation fell in the $6 to $8 million range. So we're, we're, we're in the Transformation Zone with tier-one materials. If we're required to add these 14 additional schools for $2.4 million, we get closer to full implementation. And by the way, as we keep having these accountability years, there likely will be more and more schools that fail subgroups, and would be required to provide tier-one materials. So we recognize that we're probably headed in that direction.
Any other board member questions? Mrs. Centan?
That reminded me of another question. Is the, the $2.5 million for the 14 schools, is that a one-time expense, or is that an annual expenditure?
The bulk of it is a one-time expense. Students have what are called consumables, and those are books, of course, that we have to replace every year. That would be a reoccurring if the--
As well as the PD, I'm sure, but--
And, and, yeah, step to a PD, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Great. Mr. President, we are now on item 2.2, sir.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 1118, 1944, preliminary approval of the issuance of sales tax revenue bonds and appointment of municipal advisor.
Okay. With regards to the municipal advisor, we're recommending unassigned institutional services, same advisor that has handled our last two bond sales. With regards to the, the resolution itself, at the November 7th meeting, we, we had presented the same resolution with an $18 million core value as the recommendation, and the, the agenda item was deferred, I think with the purpose, for the purpose of discussing and reviewing whether or not that $18 million, if there may be other funding sources that would allow us to increase the amount of the core value of the bonds that we can sell. So in an effort to, to facilitate discussion, further discussion with regards to determining the dollar amount of bonds to be sold, if, if in fact, the board wishes to sell additional bonds, I've attached, or to the agenda item is attached, the sales tax collections through, through October for the current fiscal year. It reflects a 5.26% increase over last year's collections for the same time period. And right underneath the listing of the monthly collections, I show that if that 5.26 were to be annualized, if it were to continue on that trend, we'd be looking at an increase of about 4.45 million that would be available for general fund budget, or a portion of it for additional debt service, depending on what the board's wishes are. Also included is a column that shows the estimated annualized amount, if that 5.26% are removed, the, the outlying months. In other words, we had some months where we collected some pretty sizable audits. For example, if you look at the attachment, August was 9.7% better than the previous year. September was 7.2%. If, if you look at the last 12 months ending October 2018, and you pull out, I think it's about four months that we, we noticed these significant swings, you basically come out to about 2.5%. And that's just another way of looking at it, a little bit more conservative approach, and it includes 12 months as opposed to just four months of, of collections. And using that 2.5%, it would indicate that we would have approximately 1.38 million to consider for use in either the general fund budget, additional debt service, or a combination of the two. So with, with that, there's a couple, there's another area I'd like to discuss with, with regards to fund balance, more specifically, unassigned fund balance and economic stabilization fund. But I thought we'd go ahead and, we would begin with sales tax and finish up on that area, and then we could move into the fund balance discussion.
All right. Do any board members have any questions on the sales tax issue? All right. Mr. Centan does.
Well, not specifically about sales tax. Let's go ahead and, I'll ask the question kind of as an overall question. Mr. Gidry's done.
Okay. So Mr. Gidry, on to your next subject.
So in December of '17, the board took action whereby the economic stabilization fund was set at two and a half months of expenditures. Prior to that time, it was three months of expenditures. So in essence, that it, it reassigned one-half months expenditures from committed to unassigned. In addition, we had existing unassigned fund balance at that time as well, which the board chose to make available for pay-as-you-go projects. So what we did at, at June 30 is, we revisited that calculation since we, we had the actual numbers for the fiscal year. In December, when we visited it, visited this particular topic, we only had half, the numbers for half the year. So the board approved the concept or the policy, and with the understanding that we would come back and, and revisit the calculation to reflect the full years of operation. We, we did that, and at, on June 30, we determined that we could transfer $38.85 million from the general fund to the school construction fund, self-funded construction fund for pay-as-you-go projects, and, and we have. And so the point that I'm making is, as of the, as of the end of last fiscal year, we have transferred the full amount of the unassigned fund balance that existed at that point in time. So it's a rather sizable amount, I, I think, to very, with regards to our pay-as-you-go projects, it provided us with a considerable amount of funding to, to fund pay-as-you-go projects. At the same time, it, at this point, it would not be a viable funding source since we, we have an S that's already committed it for that purpose. And those are the two main areas that I've, I've discussed or presented for the simple reason that the only other, only other two areas, for the most part, as far as funding sources go, would be property taxes, which are at best stable. We're expecting to collect about what we collected last year, so no growth there. And minimum foundation program, or MFP, and right, you know, that, that number is not one that I would, I would rely on to, as a funding source for debt service at this point in time, since we really have, we can estimate it, but we've learned over the past few years that, at best, to get it within $2 to $4 million, you're, you're doing well. And that's a pretty significant, you know, number when you're, when, when our budgeting brings us down to underneath $100,000 in terms of balancing our general fund budget. So that explains why I selected sales taxes and took a look at economic stabilization fund. I wanted to give the board an update on what had taken place since the last time we had that discussion. I'll ask if there are any, any questions regarding either.
Mr. Doggett?
Yes, the sales tax reference you just made, that was for our fiscal year? I'm sorry, when was that, when was that timeframe? You said that you expected to be flat.
Property taxes, we're expecting to be flat?
Yes.
For, for the current fiscal year?
A prob, I'm sorry, sales tax?
Sales taxes, as through October, or, or basically the, the first four months of collections of the current year, we're, we're 5.26% better than or ahead of last year. If I look at 12 months' worth of collections ending in October, that number's more like 2.5%. So that, I wanted to be able to give the board a feel for, you know, a range that we'd be looking at. You know, if things can, can continue the way they're going, then it would be closer to the 5.25%. If you pull out the three or four months that we've had large audit collections, it, it basically averages out to the 2.5% figure that I presented. So I wanted to give the board a range so they, they could decide their comfort level.
Could you give any insight on, I don't follow every municipality in the parish, but I do follow Youngsville and Broussard's sales tax, and they're up 15%, 20% every month, every month. How are we up 5% when they're averaging 15% to 20%? I mean, do we have some municipalities that are that far down in revenue, in sales tax revenue?
We, well, first of all, you, you, one of the things you, you look at is whether or not there's a food and drug exemption, because that, that has a significant impact on, on the outcome. And, and so for the most part, the municipalities you, you're speaking about do not have that food and drug exemption. So in other words, they're collecting taxes on that. In our case, we have it on half of, of the taxes that we're collecting. So that would be, that would be part of the reason, you know, that we're not seeing the same amount, same amount of growth. Also, audits can contribute to that. So when we go, when we go into auditing a particular vendor, that vendor may have paid, promptly paid its school board taxes, but not promptly have paid the city of Broussard, or Youngsville, or Scott, or whatever. So that can make it fluctuate as well. It's not all, another thing to consider is that growth isn't necessarily recognized by some of the other municipalities. We've had two rather large vendors that, that each individually have claimed refunds in excess of $1 million. So we're refunding that over the time period in which the overpayments were made, so it wasn't, you know, a hit in one month, because that could be devastating. But that's also having an impact on some of the other municipalities who are, are part of that refund, refunding. That didn't impact every municipality in the parish. That is another reason why, you know, you would see the growth differ, that percentage differ.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Mr. Centan?
So Mr. Gidry, I'm, I'm reading this correctly, that we are going to conservatively estimate the increase in tax, sales tax collections over the last fiscal year at 2.5% or over what we budgeted, or over the last fiscal year?
This, this would be over actual?
And, correct me if I'm wrong, we did budget a small decrease this year, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So what we're saying here, are you comfortable with that 5.26 number over the actual?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. If you ta, if you, if you look at the schedule, the comparison is actually based--
I'm sorry, 8%, it's 8% over the budget, right? That's--
Yes, it's actually based on the difference to the budget, because in essence, it's important to, to compare to actual of last year, just to see what growth or, or decrease we're experiencing. But in terms of the funding that's available, I, I looked to the budget, because if we didn't budget that increase, and those funds are in fact available as well. So that is why you'll notice the difference to budget of 2.85 million is the one that's highlighted, and that, that's what was actually used in the calculation.
Right, because, because when we actually went back and, I said actually, when we looked at actual for last year, we were basically flat when we had budgeted quite a significant decrease, right? If I, if I remember?
For the previous year?
For fiscal year '18, yes.
Yes, we had, we had budgeted a, a decrease for, for that time period.
Right. So this, so this 8%, the $2.85 million, that is the actual for fiscal year '19 compared to budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And so then, the 2.5%, which is $1.38 million?
Yes.
That is what, if we had, I'm gonna make sure I get this right, if we could expect to triple that over the course of the year?
Well, what that represents is, I took a look at the, the last 12 months ending October of 2018, and got an average of--
Oh, it's not, it's not the percentage, right?
Yeah.
So it's, okay, all right. So you were saying if, you know, if we performed as well over the next eight months as we have over the last 12, then that's what we would--
Yes.
That's what we would get?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So anything above that is speculation?
Anything above that would, would--
Would be less conservative.
Would align us more with what we've only experienced for the past four months, as opposed to, you know, a 12-month period.
You don't by any chance have, let me ask you this. So what is typically the worst month for sales tax collections? It's gotta be January, right?
The worst month typically, we're probably looking at, January is December collection, so that, that's actually a good month.
Well, I'm in, I'm in sales for January, is what I meant.
So, so March, March would be the, you know, one of the lower months in terms of what we collect during the month of March, for, for our February sales.
And do you by any chance have the difference of March '18 to March '17?
March would be an increase of approximately $180,000.
Which is like 1%, 2%?
Uh, let's see. I can, I can give that to you. About 2, about 2.4%.
Okay, all right. So what I'm, what I'm driving at here is, I think we have, and the reason I had asked last month to defer this so we could have a larger discussion about it, is we have, I think, for probably the first time in this board's tenure, going reasonably expect to experience an increase in tax collections. So I wanted to make sure that we took care of not just getting rid of additional portable buildings, but also the annual increase in costs that we experienced due to the teacher retirement-- retirement system, step increases for employees and things like that. You know, I think every year it's something, you know, around four or five million dollars that we can expect to pay over last year just if we do nothing. So, my question is now, are we going to sell these bonds? Are we going to come here in April and say, okay, well, now we have to get rid of all this, these things so that we can balance the budget? Do we have any, any kind of, has that discussion been had within the administration?
Well, when we came up with the 18 million, that number was pretty much based on the half, one-half mils. If you recall, board took action, I believe it was last year, to transfer half a mil to the self-funded construction fund for pay-as-you-go projects. So, we took a look at that and said, okay, we, we've done that. We, we've made those transfers for pay-as-you-go projects. But going forward, if the board wished to use that million, that half a mil, which comes out to about 1,083,000, towards selling bonds and using it as debt service, for about another 160,000 in addition to the 1,083, we could sell that 18 million. So, that, that's how we came up with the, the 18 million dollar amount. We were trying to get it as close to that 1,083 that the board has already approved setting aside, without having to look for additional funding. So, the additional funding required would be about 160,000, which we feel we could work with during the general fund process. So, yes, I think we have considered that, the fact that we're going in, we're beginning that, that budget cycle and as we heard with regards to agenda item one, I, I would be surprised if there'd be no general fund impact when we take a look at textbooks in, in addressing these Tier One requirements.
That answers my question perfectly. Thank you, Mr. Guidry.
Any other discussion on these items tonight? All right. The special board meeting is adjourned. We'll be back-